Today is Monday, October 12th, 2020. And I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the city council. The sanitation district meeting has been, North County Sanitation District meeting has been canceled for this evening. All right. May I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D.G. Avani?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Breen Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you very much. We'll first start off with presentations and Stephen, let me see, Stephen. I, I was, I had my sound down. Oh, Stephen, you look okay now. Can you say hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Ah, there you go, I can hear you now. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're first going to start off with proclaiming October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month. Barry Beerman, the deputy fire chief and the North County Fire Authority. So Stephen, may I have you read the proclamation, please?
Yes. Okay, this, this proclamation is for, I'm sorry, let me just mute someone here, okay. This proclamation is for Fire Prevention Month, and I will read most of it because it's all really great information. It says, "Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas homes, home fires killed 3,655 people in the United States in 2018, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the U.S. responded to 363,000 home fires. And whereas, when the smoke alarm sounds, Daly City's residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. Therefore, everyone should have a smoke alarm in each bedroom, outside the bedroom, and on every level of the home. And whereas Daly City's residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home showing all doors and windows. And whereas Daly City's residents should practice a home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night. And whereas Daly City residents should know that the best way to prevent a kitchen fire is to not leave the kitchen when cooking, especially when frying foods or cooking on the range top. And whereas Daly City's residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 from a landline phone, cell phone, or a neighbor's phone. And whereas Daly City's residents who have a fire in their home should crawl low under smoke, get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention theme, "Serve up fire safety in the kitchen," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. So on behalf of Mayor Glenn Sylvester and the members of the city council, we do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this city. And we urge all the people of Daly City to install and test smoke alarms in their homes, practice exit drills in the home, not leave the kitchen when cooking, especially when frying foods, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the North County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Month 2020.
Thank you so much, Stephen. Chief Beerman, I'll give you the floor at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stephen, for that proclamation. And Mayor Sylvester and members of the council, on behalf of Chief Ron Myers, North County Fire Authority, we appreciate taking the time to recognize the importance of Fire Prevention Month, especially within our community, and this year to be talking about fire, fire safety in the kitchen. That's one of our common causes of fires here in Daly City, is we respond to quite a few kitchen fires. And so being able to emphasize the importance of fire reduction and prevention, it's really important. And under this time of COVID and distance learning, we have really reached out and have, have reached out to all the schools in the city, have given them the platform for remote learning and fire prevention safety for all the children that we used to do yearly, in person, in schools, in the firehouse. So we're, we're recognizing as well the importance of it and making sure that we get the message out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Do we have any comments from council at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Yeah, first of all, there's, you don't ever know how much we appreciate our firefighters, our North County Fire, and Daly, that you guys are continually out in the community, still trying to educate others while still fighting wildfires, home fires, which as you heard, people heard from the numbers, they don't realize that that happens like weekly, I mean, monthly, so many times you guys respond to that. And to find out that even the fact that the little things that you guys educate people in shutting the doors on the bedrooms, make sure if the fire is in the hallway. I remember that recently, that you guys had come out with a video. If they go to your Facebook page, they'll see that video, I believe. And the little things that they can do to try to help prevent the fires in their homes and the escape routes. So, can't say enough, you guys are incredible, you give of yourselves every day. And very humbly, I thank you from the bottom of my heart to each and every one of you. Please convey my thanks. Thank you with all my heart. Thank you, and be safe.
Well, thank you for the support.
Okay, anyone else from council? Dr. Rod, that was an off and on. You got the floor, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for providing and creating this awareness for Fire Prevention Month. And like many of people I've, I've been walking around and meeting in my classes to around the mall. There are, you know, I always overhear people saying like how we don't even just have a summer anymore. It's, it's like just fire season. And I think this is like one of the policies to raise awareness in terms of understanding what could be prevented, stuff that we can have in terms of intervention from starting fires. But you know, I think this is a very, very critical and more, and very urgent issue that we need to put out into the public to understand the potentials of fire danger, especially now of difficult challenges with climate, climate change, especially now of difficult challenges with climate change, too, as basic as a fire in your frying chicken. And yeah, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done as far as education. We know that it's so important to teach our community how to prevent fires and how to stay safe. And even, as you mentioned, the statistic around majority of it is through cooking, right? The simplest things of like what, you know, what everyone does at home. And sometimes, you know, you're, you have to grab something, you're unaware. But in those quick moments, I mean, I think it's so important to just even continue that. I know a lot of people fry food at home. I would say like lots of our family members. And so I think, yeah, even in that respect, understanding that most fires actually come from the kitchen, right? And also the preventive measures of making sure you have an up-to-date smoke detector and fire alarm detector, all of these pieces are so important to keep our residents safe and businesses. So I just want to say thank you so much for all the hard work you do and very grateful to keep our community safe. And for everyone out there on the front lines, firefighters, especially in these times where we've seen how atrocious the wildfires have been. And thankfully, right now, we have some good quality air. I think, you know, everyone knows that prevention is key. And you guys have all done an amazing job to make sure we are all safe and even step up to help our neighbors who need it during the wildfires. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question, if I can.
Sure, Councilmember Buenaventura.
Yes, I was just gonna ask, what would you say is the best way to put out a grease fire? I've always sort of wondered that, and I've had many grease fires myself, and they just sort of petered out. But like assuming I don't have a fire extinguisher, what's the best way to contain that?
Well, the best way to do that would be to put a lid on it. If you could smother, take away the oxygen, that's going to be your best bet. The worst thing you can do is throw a bunch of water into it, that's just going to make it splash all over. And another thing that we don't recommend is that you try to get your pan and take it outside and put, you know, throw it somewhere because things spill, then you've got fire on the ground. But your best bet to do if you have a fire in a pan, on the stove, is just to put a lid on it, over it, turn it off, maybe move it over next to it, fire extinguisher as well. But definitely, when that happens, if you're not sure it's immediately extinguished, you know, call 911 and get everyone out of the house.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that's a good, great question, Councilmember Buenaventura. When I thought about that grease fire, I thought about, you know, when you fry them turkeys in those big pots, that can be especially dangerous. Fortunate for me, whenever I fry anything, I go outside on the patio, on the concrete floor, and just do it out there because I'm afraid, especially when that stuff splatters. Well, anyway, thank you so much, Chief. I want to also congratulate our firefighters and the North County firefighters for becoming Daly City's Department of the Week, which was a couple of weeks ago. And we had a great representative, Chief, that came down and said a few things in the public service announcements. Also, I want you to know that we are very, very appreciative of what our firefighters do. This is an evening that you're receiving a proclamation for home safety. But folks also need to know that our department firefighters have been fighting the fires both north and south for the mutual aid. And coming back from a law enforcement family, you know, we all believe that we are second family. So when you wear the uniform, I also wish to let you know that we'll be adjourning tonight's meeting in honor of San Francisco's firefighter that recently passed during a training accident. Chief, we love you, and we love all your folks. So thank you so much, and thank you for being here. And it is indeed a pleasure to provide this proclamation to the citizens and in the community. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a commendation to Ms. Pat Bohm, Executive Director of the Daly City Partnership. And Stephen, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. So I will read some of this commendation, and it first says, "Patricia or Pat Bohm will retire from the Daly City Partnership on October 12th after 20 years of dedicated service. And whereas Pat first joined the Daly City Partnership as a program coordinator for the after-school academic division in 2000, and Pat became the Executive Director of the Daly City Partnership in 2012. And under Pat's leadership, the partnership tripled the income to the partnership, became the North County Core Agency, and expanded programs to include services to families, preschool and school-age programs, as well as seniors. And her outreach and collaborative spirit has resulted in many philanthropic contributions, most recently a $250,000 donation from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. And she has worked collaboratively with countless San Mateo County agencies and served on many county-wide committees. She is a founder of Pat's Closet, which supplies clothing and home goods at no cost to families in need. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor and members of the city council, we do hereby congratulate Pat Bohm on her retirement from the Daly City Partnership and commend her hard work and dedicated service to the community. Congratulations and best wishes to you."
Great, thank you so much, Stephen, and I'll open it up to council for any comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Pat, oh my goodness, such dedication to our community and really amazing woman who really gave her heart and talent to the community around ensuring the needs of Daly City residents are met. And even sometimes beyond that, I know that you get some folks that are not from Daly City and really such tremendous work and impact. And I know that whenever you do the work, it's always around collaborative work and ensuring that you listen to the needs of the residents, you know, especially around their housing needs, food security, you know, just the families, even around connecting them to resources that many, many need. And I'm, we'll, you'll be truly missed, but I wish you the best on your retirement, a well-deserved. And as you mentioned earlier, like the sun came out for you, so you can enjoy. And, you know, we will definitely miss you. When I did see that note a while ago, and there was a posting for Executive Director, I was like, oh my goodness, you know, that's the signal I got. I'm like, she's retiring. Oh my goodness, but you know what? It's well, well deserved. And we can't thank you enough for all the time that you've given to our community. So congratulations on your retirement, but you will be truly missed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, Pat Bohm, many, many years ago, when we first met, and then you expanded and did the second home. When I was a community member, you went and you made sure that there was an inclusivity with peoples with their languages and their cultures, with our Polynesian community and many others, and integrated them together. All those evenings spent attending the Latinos. I remember we did the dinners at the Dolder. There's so many things to thank you for. JFK, I mean, it just goes on and on and on with everything you've done for this community and beyond. Pat's Closet, I mean, talk about service. And your daughter and your son and your whole family were involved. So looking forward to see you in San Bruno. Happy you have a good retirement, well-deserved for 20 years. And you know that we miss you, and you always carry a piece of our Daly City with you. And whatever comes up next, we're there for you. So looking forward to seeing you in a different thing, maybe a restaurant setting, so to celebrate. So thank you, Pat, for everything well done, and looking forward to the next chapter. Bravo. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Rod, you, okay?
Thank you, Pam, for everything you've done for the city of Daly City. There's one thing that I always share when we talk about doing service and when we provide service for folks, it's like you see yourself in other people. And I think the work that you've demonstrated through all your years professionally, personally, I just feel like you see an extension of yourself in other people that you serve. So thank you for seeing yourself in others and to brighten up and to expand the love in Daly City for the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Yep, Pat, I want to also share my, really my gratitude for all the work that you've done. You're, you've really been around, you've always been there, you always are attentive to our questions. You've, you just, you know, when you devote yourself to a project, it not only gets done, but it gets done really well. And I want you to know how much we appreciate your efforts, the effect that you've had on the city, and you've made us a better place because of all the work that you've done. So we really are going to miss you. You've just, you made a huge difference in a lot of people's lives here in Daly City. So you deserve our gratitude and thanks.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Pat, I'm going to be very, very frank. You know, I'm pretty brand-new, and we would have meetings. And I kind of appreciate those meetings because I look at body language. And I know when I was threading down a certain area, I would look at you and look at the body language, and I would say, hmm, I don't think that's going too well. So I tell you that to tell you this. As a result of watching you, I have learned a lot. You've basically made me do a 180-degree turn. And you definitely know about some of those conversations and those emails that we've had in the past when I would say, well, what about this? Well, what about this? You were quick to answer, and I said, that makes sense. That makes sense. So you have basically opened up my mind to, by your transparency and providing the information as needed. You ought to be commended. This is your day. In the famous words of Arnold Schwarzenegger, "You'll be back." I just want you to know that the door is open, and you're always welcome to our great city. Thank you so much for your years of service. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Glenn. I appreciate it.
Okay, Pat, you have the floor.
Oh, great. Well, this is such a great honor for me. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness in this commendation. And, you know, we've been at it now for 25 years. I've been with the partnership for 20 years. But we couldn't have done it without the strong connections that we had with the city. Because as a couple of people that are on the line right now, like Denise Brown and Jennifer Dur, we all started this together. We started the city-county-school-district partnership and really created some wonderful things with the ACES program, created a lot of, a lot of interdepartmental cooperation that really kind of helped things grow. So I can't thank the city enough for the partnership that they've had all these years. I believe Shawna was there in the beginning, too, and a lot of, a lot of other people on the line. So thank you so much for your partnership and your belief in us and your support. When we had the Core Agency going to nonprofit, you believed that we could do it. And I think the past five years, we've been, we've been growing by leaps and bounds. And of course, the need right now is even greater than ever because of the COVID crisis. We're giving out 1,000 boxes of, 1,000 families with food every week. And our rental assistance, thank you, city, for giving us an additional over $1 million to help the citizens of Daly City. And we hope that they are listening now, and they know that they can apply online. We also have our longtime, over 20-year participants with Operation Santa Claus. And the application just went live today on our website. So if any of the families are listening today, please go to www.dcpartnership.org and sign up to get toys for the kids for Christmas this year, because we know it's going to be hard to make ends meet. So with that, I just want to thank the city again for being such wonderful friends and partners. Pat Hensley, the Fire Department, everyone's been just so wonderful to us, so supportive. Fire Randy Ortiz comes over every Monday and helps us with the food distribution. It's one big family in Daly City. So thank you so much for being part of our family. And thank you, city council, for supporting us for all these years, too. And with that, I'm going to drift off stage left into the distance and enjoy my retirement. But next year, we're going to get together and we're going to celebrate 25 years of Daly City Partnership. So as soon as COVID is over, we'll start sending out the invitations to everybody, and I'll see you then.
Thank you, Pat. Didn't I say you'll be back?
Yes, I will, just like Adam.
That is so good, and thank you for the update. You see, folks, even on basically the last day, Pat is still moving forward and telling you everything that's coming up. So you definitely can tell the passion there. And you'll definitely be sorely missed, but we know that you'll be there for us. So thank you so much, Ms. Bohm, and thank you for helping us grow as well. Because you and what you've done, you've definitely put Daly City on the map. So thank you so much.
Happy, thank you very much.
All right, next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is it first? Okay, there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember D.G. Avani. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent agenda. And let's see, it looks like we have seven items on the consent agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to approve or bifurcate any items on the consent agenda, if there's any.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve with the exception of item number six, seven, and nine. Or moving up item nine, but taking agenda items six and seven off consent and moving agenda item nine up.
Okay, I'm not showing item nine. Is that item nine of the communications?
Yes, just moving communications up as well.
Okay, so you want to pull it from communications and move it to as apart as a consent agenda item. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Madam City Attorney?
That's, that's, that's okay, Mr. Mayor. You, we can just hear item nine before we hear item eight. So we can, we basically will just pull it off the agenda and hear it right after.
Okay, great. All right, so there's a motion by Vice Mayor. Go ahead, go ahead, Pam.
I didn't know, does this include, because I'd like to hear item one, two, four, and five.
One, two, four, and five. All right, so it looks like, now, correct me, help me out. The consent agenda will be approved with the exception of item one, two, four, five, six, seven, and under communications, we're going to move item number nine. Does that bode well for you, Vice Mayor, and a friendly amendment on your motion?
Sure, I'll take the friendly amendment that Councilmember D.G. Avani mentioned as far as the items that she had mentioned for pulling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a first and second. Any further discussion? All right, so the consent agenda, item number three has been approved. So we will begin with item number one, accepting donated funds for the Daly City Police Department K-9 program. And Ms. Malpe, do we have someone to speak on that?
He Hensley is here to speak on that.
Oh, gee, I didn't even see you there. Let me see. Okay. All right, welcome aboard, Chief. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members. This item is the acceptance of donated funds for the police department's K-9 program. On 9/21/20, September 21st of 20, the police department received an anonymous donation of $1,000 in the form of a check. The anonymous donor requested the funds be used for the K-9 unit Additionally, the donor specified the funds were to be used for the purchase, training, equipment, or veterinary care of a K-9. The police department is currently in the process of acquiring a new K-9 following the loss of Bullock. The funds will be used to offset a portion of that associated cost for the purchase and training of our new K-9. Remaining costs will be paid through asset forfeiture funds, which was previously approved by the council on September 14th of 2020. There is no fiscal impact to the city and I'm available for any additional questions the council may have.
Thank you, Chief Hensley. Are there any questions for the chief on this item?
I just had a curious question if the chief would entertain me. So I think it's, it's great that we have canines. And I, I saw a thing on the TV the other day where an officer was out on the field and she just did something with her radio and then the canine came right out of the car. Is that something that we're, that we do or capable of doing? And then I was also wondering what's the relationship with the canine? Do the canines actually live with the officer's family and that's how they take care of each other? And I wondered what, what, and what, what the, what the life of a canine is?
Sure, Councilmember Buena Ventura. So the first part of the question is, are officers and our vehicles have that same ability that the canine officer, when he's away from the car, has the ability to remotely open the rear door to allow the canine to exit the car and come stand at his side? So I, I think that's an industry standard with all the police departments. Your second question, yes, the dogs do live with the cane, with the handler. They become a part of the handler, handler's family. That's kind of the whole package for them, learning to be around people in addition to the protection duties or whatever duties we have the canine assigned to. So yes, the, the canines do live with the handlers and their families. The third part was...
How long do the canines?
That's right, sorry. We, usually the dogs last anywhere between six and eight years, pending any unforeseen medical issue that could happen with their hips or their back or something like that. But we get really, really, really top-of-the-line canines and they usually last six to eight years.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
If I may, and Chief, you could probably correct me if I'm wrong. A dog's life is to a human like seven years. So if you said six to eight years, we're looking at about, what, 48 to 57 years old that the dog would be. And based upon my experience, I know when I was working, I signed up for K-9. And one of the questions were, do you have kids at home? Because when you take the K-9 home, based upon the age of the kids, they want the K-9 to be family-oriented and kid-friendly. So besides all the work that they do, it's very, very important, especially the household as well. And they can do so much more and say, going into a building, whereas the officer can stay outside because of the senses that they have and can utilize, and especially finding hiding places. Because if you've done something wrong and you're running, the sweat is, is, is what they can focus on. So there are drug canines and so many different types. So something we, is good to have and I thank you for that update. Any other questions for the chief?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that publicly to thank the generous anonymous donor and thank the chief, because I know that's been a hard loss and that our canines are a big part of the family and Ruchucci and everybody. So we see a lot that the, our public really responds for our Daly City Police Department. If it's not Krispy Kreme doughnuts, if it's not anonymous donation, which this is very heartfelt. I, when I saw the post, I could tell after the loss. So they know, they know. You can tell that you're connected, even though we're going through COVID. People in our community really know our Daly City Police Department, really know that they're here for us. And someone out there is looking after us, many of them. So thank you, Chief, and thank you to all the officers and everyone in command. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Giovanni. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for the chief? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve item number one on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve item number one on the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that item has passed. Moving on to item number two, accepting Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Grant Funds for Forensic Laboratory Fees. And I guess, Chief, that's yours as well.
That's me again. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is recommending that the council approve awards from the federal 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funding Program in the amount of $16,118. The funds will be used for forensic laboratory fees. The police department applied for the 2020 JAG, as we call it, grant to help supplement the forensic lab fees specifically for DNA processing costs for our cold cases. One of the conditions of this application for the JAG grant funds is for the applicant to ask the governing body to review the police department's request to apply for grant funding. The primary focus again of this grant funding will be identification and testing of DNA from our cold case homicides. And that grant will be administered by the police department. The grant runs October 1st of 2020 through September 30th of 2021. No matching funds from the city. And I can assure you that money, those funds are very much needed for these efforts. If there's any questions from the mayor or the council, I'm prepared to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I?
Sure, Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Hensley, for that report on accepting the grant. I, I do want to commend your department in reaching out to get these grant monies. And I know that it's going to go to cold cases and with the technology that we have now, I'm sure that if there was anything solved, it can have closure for families or loved ones in that regard. And so thank you for, you know, finding resources outside of our city funds to do this work. I, I really appreciate that. And thank you for all you do, Chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I, this is to let people know, I guess by, this is not the first grant. They actively look for grants, our PD, and I have to commend the chief upon serving the community and still actively looking for grants. And then we end up receiving the grants, there's even more of a bonus. So that says a lot about who we are and what we do. And we, I think we only have six detectives. Is that correct, Chief?
It varies, anywhere between six, seven, anywhere.
Yeah, so for, that's pretty on the low side, I would say, for a city of our size. So they work extra hard. These are things that people don't get to see, the work that goes on, domestic violence, or like you said, the homicides or things like that. And so to commend that, they need all the help they can get in forensic. So I appreciate the effort putting in and applying for the grant, receiving the grant, and implementing the grant. So thank you very much, Chief, and to everyone, thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I had a question, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I, I understand this grant is for cold-hit homicide cases. But I was wondering, is there any provision that allows you to also do any sexual assault or rape cases when it comes to DNA evidence?
We could do that, Councilmember Buena Ventura, if that came up, the funds could be used for that. Right now, we don't have a backlog on those, those type cases. We're all current in where we should be. So that's why we're directing the money toward the cold case homicides.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Actually, that was a great question. As we all know, homicide cases, there is no statute of limitations. So even 10 to 15 years down the line, I have to commend your staff, Chief, for having to open up those cold cases. And basically, they're re-looking into the case and say, hmm, does this qualify? Did we ever get any DNA? So outstanding. I think if we can get some funds to, you said there's no backlog on sexual assault cases. I think that's very important. My concern is the statute of limitations may expire as such. So I, you know, if we can find a way, because the victims of sexual assault has been very traumatized and that would be great. But of course, human life is the most important and we want folks to know it won't go away. So great job, Chief. Any other comments at this time? Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve item number two on the agenda.
Motion to approve item number two?
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item number two has passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for construction management and support services for central corridor bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects. And is that Mr. Chu's area?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Park Engineering out of Arinda, California, to provide construction management and support services for the central corridor bicycle and pedestrian safety improvement project. This project started out with a grant application that was submitted back in 2015 for the ATP cycle two. The city was successful in being selected to receive a little bit more than $2 million for this project. In April of 2017, we applied for the grant $300,000 out of that two, two-plus million dollars for the design of the project. And so the design has been completed and we're now moving towards construction. In June of this year, the city did get approval from Caltrans for the construction portion of the project. We were pleasantly surprised that we were able to get that approval from Caltrans during the, the pandemic. But we were able to, to get that approval. So at this time, staff is seeking the services of an outside consultant. Because of the complex federal grant requirements, we do require the services of an outside consultant that specializes in construction management of federally funded projects. So in August of 2019, we released a request for proposal for construction management services. Four firms submitted the proposal by the due date of September 19, 2019. And of those four, we selected two consultants to, to bring back for an interview. And that was done in November of 2019. Park Engineering was the most qualified firm. They had the most experience in terms of working on federally funded projects. With the recent approval, we do anticipate commencing construction the end of this year, December, and then having that completed in June of 2021. The scope of the services for the construction management consultant is to provide the inspections for the day-to-day operations, also act as construction manager and resident engineer for the project. And then they will also be managing and implementing the laboratory testing procedures as required by the federal granting agency. The services from the consultant is set at an amount of $197,825.74. Staff is recommending an additional 10% for contingency for a total amount of $217,608.74. This cost is eligible for the grant reimbursement, similar to the construction itself. And so with that, staff is recommending that the city manager be authorized to execute the agreement with Park Engineering for these construction management services for the central corridor bicycle and pedestrian improvement project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. I'll open it up to council at this time.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chu, first of all, thank you. I, I also wanted to note for the, for the public that our transportation, the TDA and the City-County Association of Governments were also very supportive on this, which is always great. And I know that from having sat on that, it's nice when a project comes before us and then you, it's grants. And that we see that we get 100% support from CCAG for our pedestrian and bicycle improvement projects. So I think that it says a lot about the quality of the people that are submitting the grant, the, the reason you're doing it, the searching that you do. And that, from what I understand from the, my, my, the people I sit with on the CCAG, they are very familiar with, with Mr. Chu and the, and the department. And I think that gives a lot, we have a lot of credibility when projects are presented. And so I'm very proud to say that when something is submitted like that through that or other agencies, that our, our department shines. And so I appreciate all the hard work. So thank you for that and look forward to many more grants that you are seeking. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other question? Okay, I'll ask one question. You know, as we move forward, I, I understand that this happened some time ago and it was in the works. We are considering minority business enterprises to put in for some of these RFPs?
Yeah, actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this project, as I mentioned, is federally funded. And one of the requirements that Caltrans has is to do a disadvantaged business enterprise program, which this project does comply with. And so for this specific request for the construction management firm consultant that was selected, they actually exceed the DBE percentage requirement that we have significantly. And so it is a minority-owned business. They have a subcontractor that is not minority-owned, but overall, they exceed the, the DBE percentage requirement significantly.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Chu. Outstanding. Any other questions for Mr. Chu? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept item number four on the consent calendar?
Motion to accept item number four?
We have a first, is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, two second. Councilmember D. Giovanni, I think we got you first. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of item number four, please say aye.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? Item number four has passed. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Chu, for your report. Moving on to item number five, accepting and appropriating additional grant funding from California School Age Consortium, CALSAK. And do we have someone to report on that? Is that you, Jennifer?
Yes, hi. Hi, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. And so I am here to share a little bit more about this grant. So in 2018, CALSAK, which is California School Age Consortium, reached out to Daly City Library and Recreation, Footsteps of Belmont, so Footsteps is a childcare program, and Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club, and to work in collaboration with them on a grant through Sand Hill. And Sand Hill was reaching out to organizations to provide mental health and wellness funding. And so we worked together as a collaborative to put an application out to receive funding so that, and under California School Age Consortium, they provide professional provide professional development training for out-of-school-time organizations. And so with our collaboration, the first year or the first two years of this grant, which we accepted last year for $15,000, it went towards staff time to participate in the collaborative as well as send some of our staff to be trained as trainers. And some of the curriculum that we created through this grant include understanding mental health and wellness for youth and adults, exploring protective factors for children and youth mental health wellness. Some others are like exploring our own social emotional learning skills. So with that, we were, we had a number of organizations and professionals that we needed to train. And so then COVID hit. And so we had to scale back the number that we were serving. But the grant requires us to train those in San Mateo County and Northern Santa Clara Counties. But even during COVID, Sand Hill really believes in providing this training. And so they gave us an additional $5,000 or, well, they gave CALSAK a lump sum and CALSAK is giving us $5,000 to support the work. And some of the new curriculum that we're looking at includes cultural awareness and cultural identity and how it plays with mental health and wellness. And so that's really what we're trying to continue the work that we're doing.
Outstanding. Before you take any comments from council, I see, I don't know, did you know I was going to mention your name, Ms. Brown? Did Jennifer cover it all? Did you want to add additional? Because I know you're always pushing projects and you're letting your staff run, so that's good.
I do not have anything to say at this time. She did a great job.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, any comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, council member.
Well, Ms. Jen and Ms. Denise Brown, another great thing you've done in bringing it up to the cultural identity is, as you know, very current, very needed. It goes along with all the ethnic studies that's being approved. And it just makes it part of a piece of the puzzle and that we're able to participate in it and that that gives all more validity and more outreach. You guys have done an outstanding job in that area, whether, no matter what the events are, the mental health part, component of it. And to integrate that part, the cultural identity into it. I noticed that on the Daly City teens, when they did their video, they're really are learning about their own, which that is a big part of it. So I appreciate all the hard work, the grants. Everybody's looking for money and I want the public to know, again, another piece of Daly City, another great department that are really actively looking for the grants to keep our health and mental wellness in our community and beyond for our youth, for their cultural identity more than ever, because things are really tough for them during COVID. And thank you to the Sand Hill and continue the great work and can't be any prouder than that. So thank you both and the department. Thank you so much and all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you so much, Jennifer and Denise. I think it just shows your initiative and really looking at getting training that is innovative and up to par and ensuring that as you interact with young people, that your staff is being trained or you're even training others, which is so important. And I love to see that, that you are proactive in that regard because this transcends to our youth and young people and it's being seen in their development. And so thank you so much for your dedication and your hard work and for finding these resources for our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Dr. Rod?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to the department, Jennifer and Jen. I know that Daly City has played a pretty critical role within the county. And when Supervisor Canaba talked about about the resolution about racism as a public health concern. And I think these are the programs that are needed to really talk about, when we talk about systemic racism and to understand cultural identity. And when we talk about racism as a public health issue, it's not this is far-fetched theoretical pie in the sky type of idea. But these are really, they have really real ramifications when it comes to psychology, to one's identity, to one's understanding of trying to fit in when the context never had them able to fit in to begin with. So this is all key components, just to reiterate what council member Dejivani and my other colleague, Vice Mayor Manalo, was talking about in terms of, you know, these are like the small footsteps to create a just and equitable society. So you know, I'm all for it. And if you ever need any other additional help when it comes to that, that's my background. So feel free to always just knock on my door. We have an open door policy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else? All right, Jennifer, I have to say excellent job, well done. And I see Denise nodding her head because what I'm about to say is this is only one small part of what recreation does. And the training is very valuable. And I'm sure that what I've seen is folks multitask within the Department of Recreation. So I have to commend you, Denise, because as council, if you folks haven't seen everything that they do, look into it because you will be completely amazed. So good job to the, kudos to the both of us.
Thank you.
All right. So on item number five, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve item number five?
First, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion has passed. Thank you very much. And Ms. Brown, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number six, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Filipino Bi-Nehan Resource Center for the use of certain portions of the Dodger Arts Center located at 200 North Gate. Now, I understand we may have someone who wants to make a comment on this as well. Is that possible?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I can give a brief summary, I believe. Tita Perla is online with us at Zoom. Just by way of summary, this is a license agreement for two spaces at 200 North Gate. The summary of terms is included in your packet and the draft license agreement is also attached. It is a two-year term with an option to extend to a third year. It is authorizing the city manager to execute the contract and to move forward for the license agreement to PBRC. PBRC is a longstanding nonprofit community-based organization that's been in existence since 1989 and has been within our community. And they desire to move over to the Dodger Center. I will hand it off. I don't see her on the Zoom, but I believe she might be online with us. Perla?
She was here. I don't see her on the list. I don't think she's currently in the meeting. I know she was retraining a few times earlier, so she might be having some.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney for that presentation. I'm confident that Ms. Perla will probably get back on and we will allow her the time. In the interim, do we have any comments from council on this? Oh, Shawna, did you unmute yourself? Were you about to say something?
Yes, I just know that Tita Perla was very eager to express her gratitude to the council for this agreement. I don't want to put words in her mouth because she's an eloquent speaker on her own. But if, in the event that she doesn't get back on to the meeting, I understand that she just was wanting to express her gratitude and appreciation on behalf of herself and her board.
That's great.
Thank you so much, Shawna. All right, any comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say a comment from former Chairperson Ray Satori, who wanted to extend his thank you to the manager and staff and the rest of the city council and the support for this item and wanted to extend his gratefulness to all of you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make it brief because I know that this is really, I know they're making a move and to wish them the best in the move and that I know that they'll just keep growing in their new place and thrive. So with the best wishes to the board and to Tita Perla and Mr. Satori, President Satori, I believe, and his board as they continue to thrive in the new place as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Dejivani, any other comments? Dr. Rod?
Mine short. Yeah, yeah. Congratulations to PBRC. I know it's just spouting a new place, you know, planting a new seed. There'll be new places to grow, probably capture different populations just because it's right next to WSPA and I know there's families there that can, that probably would take, would love their services. So that's about it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else? Okay, if Tita Perla should come online, we're going to move forward. Mayor, I'll entertain a motion to accept item number six. Anyone?
Motion to accept item number six?
Mayor, I saw you unmute, so I know you're ready. Okay, first and the second, Dr. Rod's first. Second by Vice Mayor Manalo. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That matter has carried, item number six. Moving on to item number seven, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Pacific Islanders Together PIT for the use of certain portions of Lawson Hall at 125 Acacia Street. And I'll turn it over to Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is an item before you on the consent agenda in regards to the execution of the license agreement with Pacific Islands Together, PIT, for spaces, two spaces at 125 Acacia Street. And the summary of terms include a two-year license agreement with the option to extend an additional year by the city manager. PIT has expressed a need for office space and has requested in the council. And our recommendation is to license the space, office space one and two at Lawson Hall. And staff is available to answer any questions desired by the city council. And I do believe we do have Representatives, Teresa may be here to address the council as well.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I'll turn it over. Commissioner Matu, Teresa, are you there? There you are. Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to, on behalf of Ms. Raina Mafua, she's also here with us today listening. And I was given that I need to say something. So I first want to thank all of you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, the rest of the council for accepting this opportunity to have PIT call Lawson Hall as our office space. I also like to, I don't forget who was in the processing from the beginning and that is city manager Rose Simran, Leilani Ramos, Mr. Stephen Stowe. Thank you so much for, you know, working on the paperwork and everything and submitting everything. I know it was a hassle, but we got there. So again, in some one way, we say pafetai and looking forward to, to bring more privileges and opportunities for the community and especially for the city of Daly City. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner, and for being here this evening. It's very much appreciated. I'm going to allow the behind-the-scenes person who's always so humble and quiet. Ms. Raina, would you say a couple of words? I see that you're here. There you go. Go ahead, Ms. Raina. You have the floor.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Mayor, you would put me on the spot. I, I am very humble and very grateful for the opportunity. This is something that was a seed that was planted a long time ago for this space. And I am grateful to God that it's here and that we have this opportunity to have a space called as our own that we could bring more programs and opportunities to our communities and families of Daly City. So again, like Teresa said, in our language, pas tay lava, ma lo naveli fai fua mua. Yeah, man, really full. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Raina. It's good to hear your voice, the both of you. I see, I'm going to open it up to council for any comments. Vice Mayor, I'm going to start with you because you were smiling throughout all of this and you were the first one that raised your reaction hand. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to extend a gratitude to PIT as far as their service to the community, most especially even through pre-COVID times, but through COVID times, really stepped up and really helped our families and as far as food security and programming. And I know that you all lead with your heart and your passion to serve. And so I, yeah, I am just grateful for that and happy to support an organization that really leads with their heart. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Dejivani, please.
Thank you. Well, to PIT, Pacific Islands Together, Ms. Raina, Ms. Ma Fapua, Commissioner and all the executive board, all the work that you guys have done for many years in our community. And now you finally have a space, which is such a beautiful thing. So, May, I wish you the best and in your growth and your continued service to our community is always, always unconditional. You do it with so much love and I know why you do it and you do it for all of us. There's not anyone in our community that you do not include. So that inclusivity is really, really, really welcomed. So wishing the best and looking forward to the programs and more growth and have my 100% full support, as you know. And this is just the beginning of what will be. So thank you for all you do and all you continue to do. So many blessings. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Dejivani. Any other comments? Dr. Rod?
Give me, yes. Congratulations to PIT. I understand the struggle and the, you know, being part of and working in different nonprofits over the past couple of decades, I understand the struggle of trying to find a home and a location and to really do the work and having people have a home base, a mothership, I guess what you call. But this is what I'm talking about. And like, you know, kudos to the city council, you know, in terms of like really supporting organizations that institutionalize programs and nonprofits that are culturally responsive and culturally relevant to the communities that are here in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else? Councilmember Buena Ventura, you've been kind of quiet. You have any comments, sir? Okay, I get it. All right, I'll make a comment.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I'm here.
Go ahead, council member.
Oh, I just, I'm fully supportive of this. I think this is well-deserved, Raina in particular. It's just been a Raina, in particular, has just been a tireless relentless worker. And, you know, she really is the one that's put all this together. And we have to support her and the organizations that make this happen for our community. And so I'm, I'm in full support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Okay, I didn't make any comment on the last item. So I'm going to combine both of them in this, this comment now. PBRC, it's no doubt as to what you have done for the community. We continue to see it and to have the doors open for the community. I'm just so happy. For PIT, the same goes with PIT. They have been struggling, and this is basically a dream come true. I'd like to thank staff, Ms. Zimmerman, for putting all the information together for us, not just the license agreement, but basically to validate and verify what we should do. And believe me, as council, we had a big discussion on this. And I'm going to flat out say it, it was Councilmember Buena Ventura who turned me around. You, you, you know, and, and all of us working together. And this is what it's all about. Leilani, I know you were there in the background. And we've had meetings. And as PIT was looking for a place, even over at the Boys Club up there on the hill. And I remember the meeting we have. And of course, special kudos to Ms. Shauna Malpe because her openness. And when we ask why, she thinks, well, why not? I love that openness from Ms. Malpe. We made the right choice. And I will say it again, because Ms. Malpe, thank you so much. And thank you for your leadership. Both these organizations, I promise you, I feel it. They will do you proud. So thank you so much, everyone also involved. Okay, so moving ahead, so I'll entertain a motion for approval on item number seven.
Motion to approve item number seven?
Number first, there's a second. Dr. Rod, second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? That motion passes. Congratulations, Pacific Islanders Together.
Mr. Mayor, can you, let me allow me to correct the record. I thought we were voting on items six and seven together. So I wanted to make sure on item number six, that my, I want to abstain from that vote.
Okay.
Given that I'm heavily involved with the Filipino Binyan Resource Center.
Excellent. Ms. Zimmerman, did we, did we take item number six? We took that separately. So I guess Mr. Councilmember Buena Ventura says, for the record, that he abstained from this because he's involved in PBRC. Is that possible?
Yes, it's noted for the record for the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Buena Ventura. So item number seven has passed. Okay, so congratulations to both organizations, and we wish you the best of luck. Okay, in request, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, item number three, which was the sole item on the consent agenda, we got a first and a second, but we did not hear the voice vote for the record.
Wow, you're good. I don't think we pulled that. So we accepted the consent agenda with the exception of items one, two, four, five, six, seven, and item number nine that we said that we would move. So three is automatically approved. Did you want to?
If we would just have a voice vote for item number three as, as the consent agenda.
Gotcha. All right. So they have motion to approve item number three, which was not pulled from the consent agenda, and this is for clarification?
Motion to pull, a motion for item number three?
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Dr. Rod, second. Is there any additional discussion on item number three? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Sure, Madam City Attorney, and thank you. All right. So in request, we're continuing on the consent agenda. However, we're moving item number nine to under consent. So that's the item that we'll discuss now, adopting a resolution authorizing the city of Daly City to accept a bequest from the Buddhist Revocable Family Trust of 1999. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before you this evening is a recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution accepting the bequest of approximately $1 million of the Buddhist Revocable Trust as a designation to the city. I do have Mr. Nurse here, who was the attorney. And I'm going to say the administrator, who is quite instrumental in the administration of the Buddhist trust, who can give us a little bit of background of Albin and Lorraine Buddhist for consideration this evening. Tom, I think you're here?
Thank you. Thank you, Rose, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers for taking this item up. When my office was engaged to administer the Buddhist trust by the cousin of Lorraine Buddhist, who actually lived in Mill Valley and really he wasn't connected with Daly City, he brought me the trust. And I looked at it, and when I read it, and I said, oh, my gosh. The Buddhists basically left their entire trust to the city of Daly City Recreation Department for the kids in Daly City, for playground, for equipment. And I, I, I started to think, how far back did this go? And the Buddhists really were a couple that did not have children of their own, but were very, very involved in the athletic endeavors of the Ceremony Athletic League, which is also known as SAL. And SAL would sponsor baseball teams, basketball teams, soccer teams, volleyball teams for boys and girls in the ceremony area. And they played against other teams like BYA, the PAL teams, St. Andrews, Holy Angels, all of the teams that played in Daly City at that time in the rec leagues. And I, I knew them because back in the, I hate to say it, but the seventies, when I was going to college and to law school, I was, I was a recreation leader for Daly City. And on the weekends, I refereed basketball and I also umpired Little League Baseball. And so I got to know the Buddhists very well because they were there every Saturday, supporting the SAL teams, going from different parks at Ceremony to all the different venues that we would have games. And they were very, very well-known within the sports and athletic community for during the seventies, eighties, and even the early nineties. And they would coach, Al would coach teams, his wife Lorraine would be scorekeeper. They would bring, you know, snacks for the kids. They just, these were their children. And so when I saw that, I wasn't a bit surprised because basically that is their legacy to continue to do what they can for the youth of our community, even, you know, 40 years later. And so it was a great pleasure for me to be able to work on the administration of the trust, which resulted in the sale of their home. And initially, right now, we have a gift of $1 million to the city of Daly City for the use as designated in the trust. There will be, there will be some more coming, not, not nearly that much after the administration's completed. But this is the first part of the gift of $1 million. And so anyone else that's out there that remembers Lorraine and Al Buddhist, this is a time for us to express our appreciation to them at this time and the kindness that they extended to the kids of our, of our city. Thank you, Mr. Nurse. Do we have any comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tom, for that, for those stories and sharing just really how, how they really cared for the youth of Daly City. And even leaving their trust to the recreation department is something so special around seeing really their love for young people and hearing firsthand from you. What they would do is, is just a beautiful testament. And as we remember them, I, that's such a touching story. And wow, I, I, it's probably not $1 million when they purchased their home, but my goodness, that's a whole lot of resources for our rec department and libraries. So thank you so much if they are watching right now, your spirits in heaven. Thank you. You are really giving back to the youth in Daly City. So thank you for sharing that story. And we remember them greatly at this beautiful tribute.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Deejavani.
Somehow, Mr. Nurse, I don't think it was, I think it was meant to be that that landed on your desk. Because somehow I knew that when you saw it as a Daly City, which is your heart as well, and the Buddhists and what they did for SAL, and just their heart in general, to know that, you know, such giving people that we have here. And, and probably no surprise because they gave all, their whole life is what I understand from many people in our community. It's just who they were. They were always supportive in athletics and whatever we plan to do with the money. I know that I look forward to dedicating it in their loving memory. And that shows right how much love people have in this community and continue to have in this community. And the stories can, we can share when we get ready to do the dedication, whatever the plans are. So, oh, it's, it's amazing. Tonight's been full of like gifts and grants. And it just goes to prove the central of our committee. So thank you, Mr. Nurse. Again, it was meant to land with you because you have the heart as well. So there's a good message to the Buddhists, their family members, and to SAL and other members that were here during that time and are here now who remember many stories. So thank you very much and look forward to celebrating their lives and their loving blessed memories than what we were planning to do. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Dr. Rod, looks like you have muted.
Thank you, Mr. Nurse, for preparing this document. Last week, I had the pleasure to complete the whole book of Images of America, Daly City. And it was basically like a history book of Daly City with all the pictures of all the developments from, from original Daly City all the way to Ceremony. And one thing that I do is like when I look at photos, is kind of look at, or just kind of imagine like what are, what did these folks think of Daly City when they were growing up here, when they wanted to develop it? And what was their vision for what's going on? And when I, when I saw this, when then Jenna came out, and I was thinking in my head like, these, this is the type of story that should be on the news. You know, this is the type of story that should be on the local news where it's like, they sold their estate and now they're giving a million dollars for recreation. So when you think about the impact and the type of like love to give their estate to park and rec for materials or even building a park, that's someday, something I wish I could do. If I, if I had the resources, that would be something I would want to do. And I think that this is like a wonderful gift. And I just want to thank the Buddhists and whoever the family is out there. Thank you. Whoa. And my son thanks you too as one of the Daly City youth.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Was that a balloon, air coming out of a balloon?
That was my son. He was excited.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, Tom?
So sorry, can I interject for just a second?
Sure.
Thank you. I just, I know that Rose, I won't take credit for this. I think it was Rose's idea that in order to honor the Buddhists, she was working with Public Works Director on trying to find a tot lot in their, in that neighborhood. And we would dedicate that tot lot in, in their name. And I have to say, I think, Tom, you brought this to me and Rose over a year ago, a year and a half ago. I think I was brand, brand, brand new. And I thought, is this how it's going to be all the time? People are going to just donate a million dollars to one of our departments? And the answer is no. So this is pretty remarkable. And it's, it's an honor. And Tom, you're just a ray of sunshine. So keep it up. But I also just want to turn it over to our rec manager really quick because I think she's chomping a little bit to talk about, about this donation.
I want to say thank you so, so, so much, Tom, for bringing this to the table and to the family. I was one of those SAL participants back in the day. So I just want to say, wow. I think I got snacks from them. I don't even know. I just, it, it feels like it's just, it's just a really good feeling, just amazing to, to see recreation continue to shine and, and to get such greatness coming. So thank you. Thank you again so much. Really, really appreciate that.
Welcome.
We will make it worthwhile, we promise.
Thank you, Denise. Any other comments? Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, I was looking for a part of the estate. There were some albums and they went into storage, but I'm going to find them. And we'll have some photographs of the Buddhists. We'll be back at another time to make an additional presentation. I'm sure to balance the trust assets. And by then we'll have some of it and we'll be able to post some of their pictures as well. So then people that see it can say, oh, yeah, I remember them, you know, because they're very memorable people. Al was distinctive person, and she had a big beehive hairdo that she always wore. So if you see the picture, you'll, if you knew them, you will remember them. And we can honor them that way as well.
That's great.
Thank you, Tom. All right, I'll make a comment. First of all, Tom, I have to shake my head because you're basically a man of all trains. And everything that you have done for this city, if another person or attorney would have probably found this, I bet you to say they probably would not have gone after this with such zeal as you have because I know your love of Daly City. So I want to thank you for that. On a side note, when you said you were in college in the seventies, I was trying to do the math. And I think we're close to the same age, but you look much younger than me. Kudos for that, too. I'm sure that Shauna, oh, by the way, Shauna, you took some of my thunder away. I guess great minds think alike. I was thinking of some sort of perpetual plaque to be placed on site or whatever it is that we do. And maybe a bookcase that is airtight that can be displayed, you know, if we build a building there and it's for youth. And I'm sure Shauna, with you and Denise, you will make sure, Tom will probably write this up to make sure that any funds received go directly to the youth because that's what the Buddhists just wanted, wanted. So I have every confidence that you will make sure that that happens, even, you know, if some of us are gone. And Dr. Rod, message for you. Don't worry. Be careful what you wish for because things happen. And 40 years from now, if I'm still here, I'm going to remember you saying, I wish I had something. Don't doubt yourself. So, you know, many things can happen. So congratulations, Mr. Nurse. Thank you so much for that presentation, the great news. And rest assured, we will make sure that it goes to the right place. Thank you so much. Okay, so since that is, we have to adopt that resolution. Go ahead. Does someone have something? So.
Oh, motion to approve.
First and the second by Deejavani. May I have a roll?
Ms. Deejavani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, that motion has passed. Thank you, everyone. And thank you again, Mr. Nurse. Before we, okay, Tom saying bye. Don't go, Tom. All right. Thank you. We know you're a busy man. Thank you so much. don't go, Tom. All right. Thank you. We know you're a busy man. Thank you so much. Um before we go on to moving to uh the next item, which is item number eight. I like to uh go back on the uh first page. And I think I may have missed something and that's the approval of the minutes from last month. Matter of fact, I think I did miss that. So if I can entertain the motion to accept the minutes for last month unless there are any corrections.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Vice Mayor, motion is there a second? I will.
I can.
Okay, great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that uh item was passed. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Item number eight, proposed temporary new fee for lap swim at Giamona Pool. And I'll open it up to uh Ms. Brown uh uh to provide us a report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So um staff is recommending that the City Council approves our temporary fee change of six dollars to ten dollars for our aquatic slap swim program. We brought this um staff report back in July. And we were still fresh, kind of getting our understanding and our feet wet um with the um COVID nineteen and where we were at. But we wanted to be proactive and try and offer opportunities uh at the pool. I'm a firm believer in things happen for a reason and at that time it wasn't meant to be because a few weeks later the whole county shut down. And so we had to kind of rethink our game as well as within the staff report. Um your concern was some safety concerns. And so the staff work that we are presenting this evening not only talks about um our need for lap swim and increasing the fee to ten dollars on a temporary basis through the COVID nineteen pandemic. But it also kind of talks about the different um safety uh areas that we are addressing and how we will proceed with bringing lap swim in a safe and meaningful way to the community. Um, there are a few cities, well, obviously us, the county in the red zone. And we cannot open up our aquatics um pool until we are in orange and in orange, we are able to bring in ten percent of the community. So for us, that would be our lap swim program and we would be allowing nine participants in at a time, each in their own individual lanes. We would have in two different sessions between two and three hours. Each session would hold uh thirty minute sessions that each participant could register in our active system through. And that's the only way they would be able to register. So they would register. And then they would come on their designated time. They would get thirty minutes of swim time. And then they would remove themselves from the pool. Um and then the next group would come in. So it's two to three hours. Thirty minute time slots. Um we have a process where they would come in. We would have four staff that would be there. One person to check the person in at as they entered the pool. One person in each of the locker rooms to uh make sure that they go through and do whatever they need to do before they get into the pool, onto the pool area. And then we'll have a lifeguard on duty. So they'll get in through the to the pool. They will get their designated lane already depicted for them. They would remove all of their um items and already be dressed up in their um swimwear. Do their thirty minute swim, come out of the pool, put their top or coverings on and then leave the pool. The only time that their mask would be off was when they were in the pool. Um and then on the opposite side of the pool where they're exiting, the next nine participants would come up to their designated lane space. So there would be one entrance point and one exit point for each group. So they would never co-mingle. There would be more than six feet of distance between the nine and nine participants. Um and currently, there is only one pool in the county that is open citywide and that is Pacifica because it is an outdoor location. They are charging ten dollars and their participants are partaking in the lap swim. So we're hoping that when we get to orange um based on um City Council's approval of the fee, we can then open up our pool to lap swim for our participants as well. Um and so staff is again recommending moving from six dollars to ten dollars during the pandemic only. And then um we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh any questions from council? Uh Stephen, uh you popped up all of a sudden. Were you going to say something ahead?
No, I um I can also check public comment when we get to that point, but no.
Okay, great. Uh any comments from council?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um I I thank you for the presentation, Denise. Um one question I did ask uh at the prior meeting was if we knew when was the last time we raised the fees. Um and uh that was just a a question I had. When was the last time we raised the fees? And if so, how much?
Romeo, might you know that answer?
From what I remember, two thousand twelve and it was twenty-five percent less.
And again, this fee increase would only be.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments? Uh Councilmember D.G. Avani?
Yes, I just have a quick one. Um thank you again, um Ms. Brown for the presentation, Denise and Romeo for all the hard work you put into it. And you did it really in depth on the safety. The only thing is I I I remember and uh I just want to make sure that the public knows that I is that being in a pool according to all, even the, I believe it was our county health, um Mr. Murrow, that it is safe to be in a pool. That's my understanding. Is that correct? Um Ms. Brown? So that the the people will be reassured that it's okay to be in the pool. Because I remember hearing that from our county health at one time that it was it was okay during COVID.
Mr. Benson.
Um, from what we're hearing, um being in the water would be fine. Because you know, well, when your head's underwater, it's definitely fine. But unfortunately, there was no proof whether it was safe, um especially when, for example, if you and I were swimming right next to each other, less than four feet. And we're breathing really hard or coughing up water, then it wouldn't be safe in this case. But um with our heads being underwater, we would be perfectly fine and staying within six feet. Um but still, again, follow CDC guidelines.
Yeah. Thank you for doing your work, Romeo. Appreciate it. I think that's the the only other question that I had and you guys did an extensive uh study. And then I saw where you did analysis of the cost recovery. Which uh that was the I think the the move uh for this because uh before we were behind, was that correct? For cost recovery?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for staff time and do we have lifeguards ready to go?
There's one lifeguard that will be on deck. And then three other staff, two, one in each locker room and one allowing people in.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Romeo, as well.
And I want to recognize Chris Mariano, who's
Who's Chris.
Right there as well.
Ah, thank you, Chris.
With his cohorts.
He's hiding there.
Uh I saw Chris raise his hand, so I guess he's the designated lifeguard. Um uh a- any other comments? Okay, I have to echo uh uh the point that uh Councilmember D.G. Avani brought up. And that's what I was concerned about cost recovery. I think outstanding work has been done to uh consider this, therefore the raise. I think what has not been said, and uh Ms. Brown, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Besides the extra precautions that are taken, uh you know, you said someone to check them in. I assume that uh you know, they'll be checking for temperatures and that's part of the check-in process. And uh Romeo, I think you answered part of my question. I mean, I'm no expert. And I, you know, I'm just wondering with your head underwater and you're uh letting out some water or if you do uh does chlorine kill it? You 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 I don't know. So uh you know, I was concerned about that. But thanks for letting me know about the spitting up of water when you're getting air and breathing hard. So I don't know. Maybe you could answer that question about chlorine?
At this time, there's no proof that it's spreadable underwater with um the chlorinated levels being high and acidity being high. Um at this rate, um there's no proof that it can be spread underwater.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Okay, any other comments from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a real quick one. Even though I know that we're going to be um uh this is just during COVID. Uh just I guess in general, if people cannot afford, I guess it's going to be ongoing. Uh we still are going to offer our scholarships for the um those that cannot afford some of our programs anyway. We're still going to continue that. For some of the children like that uh perhaps their parents are not even working.
Or so because the lap swim is a drop-in, we don't do scholarships on drop-in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Uh uh I don't know. I think maybe as we move forward in the future, like we helped out with uh rental assistance. Then maybe we can find some funds that we can put aside, uh or maybe
Yes.
DDBG grant funds and just allocate a certain amount and once it's used up. So I think that'll be a topic for another discussion later.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, great. All right, any other comments? Okay, with uh hearing none, what I'd like to do now is open it up to the public for any comments and I'll uh defer to Mr. Stolti if we have any comments on this item.
No comments on this item.
Uh thank you. I uh like to close the hearing at this time. And at this time, I'll enter uh entertain a motion to approve item number eight. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve um item number eight.
Okay, is it? That's a first. Is there a second? I will make the second. Uh all right, may I have a uh roll call?
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Hi.
Ms. Manalo.
Hi.
Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Mr. Breena Ventura.
Hi.
Mr. Sylvester.
Hi. That motion has passed. Look at the smile on Denise's face. Uh congratulate uh Mr. Benson and uh was it uh Mariano who was here? Uh thank you all so much for uh what you do. And again, I'll reiterate, that's only one part of recreation. So great job. Okay. Uh moving on to public appearances and communications, I'd like to defer to uh Stephen for any um comments.
We actually have no public comment tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stolti. All right, are there any appointments, board commission, membership or committee appointments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to reports. Uh ten, item number ten, council committee reports. Anyone? Okay, moving on to item number eleven, city council reports. Vice Mayor.
City Council reports. I I just want to commend the city and the staff, Stephen and everyone again for being able to receive another Beacon Award uh with the League of Cities of California and I'm just really, really proud of how there's a continuity in in that respect. Um and I know it's so important, especially with what we've seen around climate change and just that steadfast look at how we can continue to improve. So um congratulations to all the staff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh since we're on that topic of the Beacon Award. Uh I was so pleased to accept the award virtually. And in my ignorance, I did not know that this was not just a beacon award. It was the Vanguard Award, which is a higher step that uh precedes the uh regular Beacon Award. So again, thank you, staff, Stephen. Uh uh I I know what your job was uh before and that's recyclables and whatnot, but uh you've definitely raised the bar and you continue to do so. So uh Shauna, thank you for your leadership again. You need to be recognized as well. And Leilani, thank you everyone for your input and uh keeping Daily City on to the map.
I just want to say that Leilani worked on that application this year. It's a big application. So I just want to give her a shout out on all of that.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Leilani. They uh uh you know, what happens in the background? We need to acknowledge that. So I'm acknowledging you, Leilani, for everything that you do as well. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh Councilmember D.G. Avani.
This is the city council reports, correct? Okay. So first of all, yes, kudos to Vanguard Award. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for accepting it on behalf. And yes, Stephen, Leilani, uh Ms. Malby. Uh what a team we have and um fighting climate change. So we never want to, we never want to stop for that. So we won last year and now it looks like uh we keep excelling all the time, Mr. Stolti. Uh with your expertise and sustainability and as well as Leilani up um under your under the wing with the sustainability and Ms. Malby. But thank you for that. And continuing uh with the city council reports, uh Mr. Mayor is that I'm sure the rest of you probably will be reporting as well, that the council of those that signed up uh attended the California League of Cities three-day conference virtually. And a lot of us did different workshops. Um a couple of the workshop sessions that that I participated or came part of with placemaking and community branding.
Okay. You're a little muffled there.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. And uh placemaking and community branding that leverages your natural assets. They have several sessions that we attended over three days. Uh in noting advancing racial equality, uh which was an an introduction and they did a follow-up session with that one. And then also in the, I believe on the other day, one of the main ones was the harassment prevention training for supervisor officials, A B one six six one. I think we couldn't attend everything, but I think that the overall conference virtually, they did an excellent job. I like to thank everyone at the California League of Cities and for the IT for helping me set up. And the other to note is the thank everyone who um put together the uh Heritage Filipino Heritage Month virtually as well. I know that everything is virtually, but I know that was a hard task at hand, but I had great feedback from everyone on that one. And it was also the October Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And on uh Chief Hensley's birthday, he was promoting, um as you can see, our Daily City patches on his birthday. So I'd like to encourage everyone, you can go to the front desk of our city hall and purchase one of these for ten dollars, I believe. Some of the council did. I think the mayor did last year. And uh it still goes on in honor of the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And also this month, there's so much goes on that we celebrated this uh past weekend as well as the Filipino Heritage was the Italian-American Heritage River. And um they did it also in North Beach. It was a hundred and fifty-two years in that area as well. So um that is it for this particular. Oh, and then we had a mobile COVID unit at Burlington Boat Factory. It was a two-day walk up and you did not have to pre-register. It also was children five years and up. It was great to see our community that we served over twelve hundred people, I believe approximately, got tested. Big shout out to Shereen. They only had two days to shut uh set up. So hopefully we'll be able to get that back as well for the county because it was a great thing to um to attract from the apartments, which they didn't have time to advertise that yet. So um being in touch with Shereen and looking forward to the next time to bring the mobile testing. And people were standing there in line, signing up, getting tested, and then they were calling their friends and family to come as well. So it was a great community. Um I was very humbled to be at the site for two days with Shereen and the Curative was which is a company, but they did an excellent job. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it for my city council.
Thank you, Councilmember D.G. Avani. Any other city council reports?
Um yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report out that um the Mask Mobile was out on October fifth in Daly City. Um was able to join Supervisor David Canapa at Westlake, providing masks for those. Um just giving them out for free so that uh people have access and um we we do know how scientifically masks prevent the spread of COVID. Um but uh it was really great to have uh the county provide that and um and and, and that they were there in our city of Daly City. So I'd just say thank you to the county, thank you Supervisor Canapa. It was a great response from people, and I think sometimes they are surprised that it's free. So I know that, that, you know, every mask helps as far as we need to make sure everyone masks up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And anyone else? Okay, Vice Mayor, thank you for that information on the Mask Mobile. I know they don't advertise it as to where they're going to be so that we don't prevent, so that we prevent a large crowd from gathering. However, as per the county, they tried to look at the results of COVID-19 and tried to go to that most distressed area, and that's when the Mask Mobile would show up. So I'm glad, Vice Mayor, you caught on to it and you found out where they're at. And it's good for your representation with Supervisor Canapa. I want to let everyone know that for the past two weeks, as you know, the county has been ramping up the testing for COVID cases. Councilmember D. Giovanni kind of alluded to it. And believe me, Shauna, Stephen, and Leilani, there's a lot that goes into it. Even though we get the tests for free, there are other logistics involved as to volunteers, who would administer the test? Where will it be? So I, kudos to the staff for constantly thinking about this and to handle the logistics. We can get it free, but there are other logistics that's involved. And believe me, we want to do it. So I know that's on the mind of Shauna, Stephen, and Leilani. So thank you for that. Other than that, I have nothing else for city council reports. Anybody else before we move on?
You, I have a few things.
Yes, Dr. Rod, please.
So I just wanted to acknowledge today was Indigenous Peoples' Day. And just to really, you know, we think about history, where did this history, where did this nation come from? And, you know, I think a lot of times we got to understand, like, you can't discover something that where people's already been occupying. So I encourage everybody to read and understand. And some books that are out there, like The People's History of the United States or The Indigenous Peoples of the United States, there's different authors that are out there that have written about this. Also, it being Filipino-American History Month, I know there's a lot of folks on council that have been super busy, including myself. Again, I just want to reiterate, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and just, and talk about, like, just reinforcing what you said about, you know, kudos to Park and Rec for the Casa Yanasa Daly City. It's, that's, it's a hard thing. I mean, trying to produce and trying to get everything online on different platforms, that's a huge deal. So congratulations to the folks in Park and Rec, Kumu, and everybody that I associated with that. I've been a part of all these different get out to vote events that have been online. One was, I had the pleasure to be on a call sponsored by the National Federation of Filipino-American Associations, where they were able to get Jill Biden to talk about the importance of getting out to vote. So again, it's a very, very crucial time, get out to vote. The ballot's already out there. There's different places to send your votes, mail, drop-out boxes, or you can mail in person, or, I mean, not mail, you can vote in person. Another event I was, I got some chance to do was a college event. It was Filipinos, I can't remember the organization off the top of my head, but I was on a panel with YouTube sensation star from Marina Valley, AJ Raphael, which is kind of funny because, you know, we both grew up in the same area in Riverside County, in Riverside, California. And I was like, oh, you're from Riverside, I'm from Riverside. And it was actually really cool to be on a panel where you had two outstanding artists that could sing, and then they have me that does not know how to sing or dance. The other person that was on the panel was Issa Barones. She has been on cast with Hamilton and various Broadway productions. So again, it just felt kind of weird to be on a panel with two amazing artists and then myself that was just there, just talked about, like, a context of history and importance of the vote. And just encourage people to even run for local office. Like, it's just, if we want to make change, we have to go beyond voting. But how do we get people to, to get on to commissions or get on to local elections and stuff? Yeah, and then I got to also attend the council of cities as well the first day. I was really, really impressed by the keynote speaker, his name was Neil Pasricha, who was the director for Institute for Global Happiness. Where can I work with them? But I think he, he was such an inspirational speaker. I think he was actually a really key component to speaking to the current global context because of everything that's going on. It's, it's, it just feels like a lot of doom and gloom, but he had some really good resources and also good reflection journals and reflections and questions that you can think of to, kind of like, not just snap out of it, but to just think about what makes you happy and what fuels your passion and what you do that fuels your passion, how is it going to impact the world? So, yeah, it was a full two weeks and it's, October's not done yet. So that's about it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rod. You know, I, I actually forgot to make mention, because I did know about Indigenous Peoples' Day. And thank you for that reminder. I was in Palo Alto today at a place, even a hamburger called Wal's Burger, Mark Wahlberg's place. It's one of the best hamburgers I ever had, but I, I, I'm saying, I, the only reason I'm saying this because we're eating on the outside and then here comes a crowd. And the party with me says, well, what's that all about? I looked over, I saw the sign, oh, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I said, oh, okay, so it's good to stay up on all of this, and thank you for that reminder. All right, any other city council reports?
Along with that, Mayor, as we talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think it would be great if there was some way we can ensure as we move on with any correspondence, I'd like to see us, you know, honor Indigenous Peoples' Day in our literature or, or whatnot in that respect. And I know this is a public comment right now, but that's something I would like us to look into in, in, with the city, within the city of Daly City.
Absolutely. I see Stephen nodding his head. Maybe Stephen, we can at least make mention of that, maybe perhaps in our next newsletter or something, blurb about Indigenous people, because Daly City is a city of culture and diversity, and we want to recognize everything. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that thought.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I forgot one thing, and I'll be really short. You know, I, with the League of California Cities, I was honored and thankful to be part of the API Caucus of the League of Cities and am now currently the second vice president for the API Caucus and happy to serve on that board and represent for us here in the city of Daly City.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry I missed that, but you know what? You are not serving in just the city of Daly City. You are serving throughout the nation for the caucus. So congratulations on your promotion. Well, very well deserved. You represent very well, so thank you for that. Okay. Any other city council reports? You know, last month I left out Ms. Malby. Ms. Malby, you get extra time this month. Go ahead, Ms. Malby. Now it's for staff reports, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't need extra time. I just wanted to remind our community to, if you're so inclined, to check out our weekly public service announcement. We cover a lot of different topics. As the mayor mentioned earlier, it was his idea to spotlight a different department every week, and that's been kind of fun. The mayor's gotten really good at it, too, I have to say. And he's entertaining, and a lot of the information is really important and very timely. It's, you know, the step-by-step of what's going on with COVID and how the city's handling it. So this week, we are going to be covering Public Works. And we're going to have our Director of Public Works talk a little bit about the problem of illegal garbage dumping in the city, which has historically been a problem in Daly City, but now through COVID, it's just, it's just, it's gotten pretty bad. And so we, we're going to talk about that on Thursday and how the city plans to address it. So, but that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Ms. Malby. That is indeed relevant. And thank you for staying up on it. I know Mr. Stolti has been responding out in the community. And folks are still not happy, but I know as a team, we are doing the best we can. Thanks to Leilani and your staff. I know that we do have a program to which we will put it out to the community to include awareness, see something, say something. And maybe as a council, we consider other solutions, whether it be stiffer finds, whether it be cameras, but I know that's to come, but I think the community needs this now. So great job. Thank you so much, Shauna and staff. And thanks for the plug on the PSAs. And you've heard me say it before, I think Stephen Stolti has been doing an outstanding job, and he's really the voice of Daly City. So I just wanted to put that out there because he does very well. Councilmember Buenaventura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask maybe you or the city manager to address the issue of the ICE raids in Daly City because I think the community, I know you issued a really good statement to that effect, but I think it would be good if the public heard it if they're watching right now so we have, we can have some kind of record of what, what the facts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. Stephen, Councilmember Buenaventura is familiar with the press release that was created. And thank you so much for expeditiously handling this. And I'll defer to you to add any more. Have you heard anything else? Or your thoughts, or Shauna, maybe you can provide additional information?
Sure. I can reiterate some of the information we included in the press statement. You know, we, as a city, do not allow our local law enforcement or police department or any other resources to be used for the enforcement of federal immigration law. And no city employees are permitted to perform the functions of federal immigration officers. So we don't engage with ICE. And our police department had nothing to do with this recent round of arrests that ICE conducted in three California cities. So it's alarming. And, you know, we have a quote from you, Mayor, in that press statement that really underscores that we don't cooperate with ICE and that the city council as a body has really worked hard to ensure that our police department policies and protocols are very clear on that matter. And mid-last year, in 2019, we went through a really comprehensive review of police department policies to ensure compliance with something called SB 54. That's the California Values Act. And as a city council, you all unanimously passed a resolution that declared our commitment to respecting the rights of all of our community members irrespective of immigration status. So, and all of our police personnel were retrained on the city's SB 54-related policies as well. So this recent round of arrests, you know, we don't have a ton of information on it because we're not cooperating with ICE to begin with. But we do condemn that recent activity in our city.
Thank you, Stephen. Did we ever put that up on our website also?
So, yeah. Yeah, it's on the homepage at dalycity.org if you want to take a look.
All right, Councilmember Buenaventura, was there any other suggestion? I, I got you, Vice Mayor, you're next.
No, I'm good. I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think it would be also helpful. I, I know you mentioned on our website, if we can post that on our social media, that there was a response to that. I think it would also be able to spread the word.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Next door, is that Vice Mayor you're referring to, social media?
Social media, whether it's Nextdoor or also Nextdoor or on our Instagram or Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving ahead, anything further? All right, the next item is the adjourned in memory. And what I would like to do is give the floor to Councilmember D. Giovanni, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as we all know, that there was a recent death of a firefighter. He was a 13-year veteran for the San Francisco Fire Department. He was killed while in a training, sadly. He's a husband, father of two. And also wanted to note, him being only 42 years old and his end of watch was October the 7th on 2020. So it was great heaviness for all the firefighters and first responders that this tragic accident occurred, which is a result of his death that same day. Secondly, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jean McNabb. Jean McNabb was also a longtime volunteer for Dorser Senior Center. She passed away at the age of 88 years old. She was known for her sense of humor and her Irish heritage. She was also president of the OLM Young at Heart Club. She was a volunteer also at the OLM's Parish Festival. And beloved, she mentioned it twice, her beloved Dorser Center, as well as many other things. So thank you for allowing me and to her family, much condolences. And to all the seniors at Dorser Center, because they are also family together, big condolences in the loss of one of your own. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. I would like to adjourn in memory of one of Daly City's immediate family members, author Gerald Green Jr. And he's the dad of our finest Daly City PD, Lieutenant Edward Green. So with that being said, I'd like to adjourn in memory of everyone mentioned this evening. May I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for all of your support. Stay safe, stay healthy. We are Daly City strong. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.